I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call please.
Um, all board members will be present along with the principals, superintendent, and here.
Uh, motion for adoption of the agenda?
Don't move.
And a second?
Second.
We have a couple of extra board committee reports, but otherwise no other changes. Anybody else have any other corrections, changes? Hearing now in all in favor, I?
I am.
All of us say inside. Communications recognition, open forum report?
Uh, we had a number of people here with some questions and comments on the the balloting and voting places for the referendum. Uh, I think the questions have been answered. The most part they are things we've kind of gone over on the open presentations too, so.
Alright. Moving on to board committees.
Oh, Wellness is not listening.
Wellness, I was there. We have reports, um, there's a couple of interesting things here. We have reports from the school nurse, food service, and the programs. And then, um, spent a decent amount of time discussing the health insurance issue, so our insurance carrier changed to source well. And as part of that, we are going to get some money and some incentive funds that can be used for staff wellness. And Michaela is going to help head that up, but we'll probably need some help in different buildings to help coordinate that. It's just, it's something that I think we had with the previous carrier a number of years ago, and then hadn't had it with the most recent carrier, and now we have it again, so we kind of have to kick back and adhere with that, but it's nice to have a little bit of funding there. And then, just curious, we got an update on the food for thought backpack program and ninety-two students in elementary school, thirty-nine in the middle school and high school, fifteen over at the ALC. Good to keep in our consciousness. That's it. I'm not missing any highlights. PTA?
Yeah, for PTA, um, we discussed our last fundraiser, since it's now wrapped up, we made two thousand forty dollars on the buy sales, and that was profit. And therefore able to fund requests that are coming in for the elementary kids, for instance, um, they'll be funding now a, their busing to the ski trip. Um, each grade can request money for their field trips throughout the year. And we also discussed the conference meal for teachers that we put on and that we were able to fund, and I wanted to highlight and just commend the food service because the PTA asked the food service to provide that meal and, or to, yeah, to provide it, PTA paid for that. And I just wanted to recommend this as a great resource, the, the food service for any meals because, um, really worked, they've worked so well with, I think, any school group that's making the request, even down to, uh, for instance, which parts we might more economically supply pieces of the meal. And they're just very down-to-earth with that, and, um, so that kind of left us with the feeling that they're really trying to serve us well. In this case, the PTA teachers and staffs at our school.
Uh, Steve?
Uh, we had our organizational meeting, where we collected officers, went through budgets, all of those good things. Um, really the only kind of interesting thing was, we talked a little bit about strategic goals for the twenty-two, twenty-three, looking out for twenty-four. Both the districts still kind of trying to figure out, um, online school, I guess, kind of offering more online classes because all of the districts are losing students that are taking classes online, so the superintendents I think are working on it, talking about it still, whether or not C Mets could become an accredited, I don't know what the word is, but online school. So, that was kind of interesting, so other than that, it was very, some things don't apply to us, we don't use the phone system. The fall outage they talked a little bit about was cybersecurity. Oh, yes, Albany is leaving C Mets, so they are still attending the meetings this year, they have to provide, um, because they just kind of up and decided to leave, so they're part of the contract here for this year, so they still have to provide their financial share for the whole year, and then next year will be reevaluated or separated among the others. Then there was, nobody said anything at the meeting, but there was an article in the paper about Sock Center and C Mets, so I'm not sure, there's something coming out after thinking about it, so, yeah. So, and we had all the board members there. So, we were overboard, but doesn't always happen. That's all.
Uh, C meeting?
Yeah, I had the chance to go down to, or, no, I didn't go to the C meeting, I attended it online though, and, um, the new commissioner for MBE was there presenting, and he talked about the governor's budget. Um, seven billion dollars going to education over the next four years, and saying that January twenty-fourth, the specific details will be coming out. And so lots of details on that, as far as how it's all getting divvied out. Some things I thought interesting, there was nothing in there for the inequities for the zip code kind of funding that C really tries to work on, but, um, but they did say there were explicit monies coming to Greater Minnesota. Special ed class subsidy is written in there at fifty percent. And another thing I found interesting was the multilingual, for districts with higher ratio of multilingual students, there's a twenty-five percent increase there.
What else?
E L funding, now that's what we're focusing on. I've got, in my report, I'll talk a little bit more because as he continues to roll this out, the governor's now kicked his budget out to January twenty-seventh this Friday, but as superintendent association, they've been rolling some of this information out, so we'll talk more, and I know, uh, Ms. Clausen mentioned it, the, the new MBE commissioner is, if those aren't aware, Dr. Willie Chet, he was the superintendent in St. Cloud for nine years. But he is, he's been promoted, I'm not, it's going to be approved by the legislature. I think he'll get approval, but, um, yeah, I, I, I don't even, I can't even remember the last time that the MBE commissioner was a superintendent. Would or bad, I don't remember, but, um, obviously he has a lot of superintendent experience on his own. Looking forward to working with him.
And SBA?
For our, sorry.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, I only went to the first or the second thing. You know, the speaker was Dr. Adolf Brown, did an excellent job, I thought. What I, my takeaway was really don't judge a book by its cover, he kind of went through and dressed up as kind of like a bum, and then he kind of, as he was doing his presentations, he just kept picking up parcels of clothes, and by the end of the day, you know, he was standing there, he was very professional looking, grew well groomed and everything. It was good. Uh, those timetable round sessions, a little short sessions. There's a lot of people and a lot more people than cable, so he pretty much just kind of got, if you had an open carry, just book it. Well, I jumped in the one that talks about increasing your board, your boardroom's performance, and I'll be honest, some of the comments that were made by board members around the state, thank goodness we don't have those issues. That was my takeaway there, so it actually made me look pretty good. Um, as far as the actual classroom, I went into Pelsby, I really didn't know a lot about Pelsby. Got kind of educated, I actually went through the one and the two. First session was not near as good, the second session, it basically broke down what Pelsby is. I still think it's really weird that as an educator, you get your license from one state agency, and it's not the Minnesota Department of Education, the Minnesota Department of Education handles other things. But for some reason, our politicians decided to split that weird fact. Uh, they talked a little bit about what the requirements are, what is, what is needed. Uh, they talked about the, I think they called them levels, level one, two, three, four. And they did talk a little bit, that's something that we've talked about quite often, is our industrial ed teachers not necessarily having to have a teacher background, it can get more on board as a provisional, as long as they have mastered the arts, you know, whether it's welding, or mechanics, or carpentry. So, if we were to look into expanding that, I think it's something that I would like to revisit. I got some paperwork at home that I can kind of share with you at later time. So I thought that was kind of unique, I thought, my understanding was, is you had to be a licensed educator in order to apply, but with industrial tech, that's not the case. Those are my takeaways from that day.
Um, I did one, the Thursday night one, um, there's a department in the state that deals with tools and skills for collaboration, that does problem solving, that most people don't even know is there. They work with mediation, they work with schools, they work with businesses, and you can reach out to them for anything, and they're paid for by the state. So I thought that was good. With the, the one I was most impressed by was a group of people from Roseau and Leverne who have worked together through Max Foundation and Project Eleven, which is out of Canada. Um, the Max Foundation was started when a young man, um, who was a hockey player committed suicide. Project Eleven was the same thing, that was a hockey player who committed suicide. The, the Max Foundation reached out to this one in Canada, it's a program that they, they have for kids, K through six. Max Foundation provides the books that the kids read, but the training and the curriculum access, everything comes from Canada, it's free. It's, um, two hours of training online for the teachers, and then it's fifteen minutes a week for fifteen weeks. And both schools were so impressed with what it's done, and, and they've all been touched by suicides, suicides like everybody has, but this reaches the kids when they're young, and how to deal with those, those issues, and how to speak out, and, and to help teachers to, to look at the kids and and talk to them and listen to them and go, whoa, this, this kid needs to talk more, whatever. So I think it's a really good program that I'd like to, I haven't had the chance to talk to Greg yet about it, and then, and Terrell, but, um, it's free, it's kind of like, to me, it's an over, it's fifteen minutes a week, it's, and it's all online, the teachers do everything, I mean, they teach it online, the teachers don't have to go, more training, oh, it's another thing we have to work on. This is right there for them, and, and they said to, to let them know that it came from the Minnesota MSBA conference, so they realized how many people they have touched or reached out to, so, so that, that was my big takeaway from that. There was a lot of good stuff to that.
Um, I'll highlight a couple of them, I went to several sessions, but, um, one was a small royal, uh, school district in northwest Minnesota, and they had worked to develop a program, they started with just, uh, one grade level, where some teachers were really trying to figure out, um, what are some evidence-based practices and assessing, they did lots of short assessments to figure out which interventions they need to use for book, math, and science. And, um, whether it's individual students who are lacking, and they graph it all, whether it's individual students who are lacking particular skills, or sometimes it would be a whole class that most of them were missing those skills, and they reteach the whole the whole class. And I think, I, I talked to Lee about it, she said that we do something similar to that here. And, um, but they said what really made their program special is the way they organize their groupings, and then monitor the progress to make sure that each skill that they tested and found lacking in either the groups of students or individuals gets re-taught, and that they've really seen their scores risen a lot, um, from that. They also included a gifted and talented challenge for groups of students that were at the high flyers. And then, um, second one I'll highlight was from Detroit Lakes High School, they have, they called it an academy model, and they emphasize something different in each of the freshman, sophomore, junior, senior years. Um, just trying to help kids be ready for, um, either college-ready, career-ready, life-ready, they said. But for instance, in the freshman seminar, they describe things such as resume writing, they teach them how to shake hands, they have them memorize parts of their resume, and then interview, and just talk about how impressive it is for a fourteen-year-old to be able to articulate some of those things that they've helped them come up with on their resumes, and then they keep revising them over the years. So, um, they have a ceremony where they make a commitment to graduate. And, uh, they, they really want, their goal is for each kid to come away with two certifications and two different careers, so they have the community businesses involved, so it kind of reminded me a lot of what our C E O business course is that the kids can take here, in some ways, because of the community involvement. So they, they said about sixty percent of their students were going to four-year schools, and only twenty-two percent of the jobs in Minnesota require a four-year degree. So they're trying to help them see the VOTX, that yes, four-year college is for some, but also what are all these other options that are right there in their community?
I think, who was the other person that went? I went to a couple of the, uh, roundtable, I, conversations, which are limited because of it's in a small area, I'm not sure it's the most effective use of time because just hearing things is difficult. Uh, ended up, there was a, a session on school board self-evaluation, and then another one on rural law. Interesting, not wholly applicable to us, but and then as far as other sessions, I there are Mankato School District did one on, uh, school board leadership during turbulent times, and then another one. Sat in briefly on one about referendums, which wasn't as applicable, so I switched over. Um, the only other thing I thought is, you know, that they spent, I know how, this is how they fund the conference with the, all the vendors and things. And there's too much time spent on that, if you ask me, but one of the conversations with the solar, somebody that does solar projects on roofs, which I thought was interesting, that was that was an interesting conversation, at some point would be interesting to, um, talk about more, it doesn't seem like it's that much upfront money from the school district. Or really, sounds a little too good to be true, so I need to dig into the numbers more, but, um, seems like it would be possible. Especially if you have
Uh, Randy? Oh? That was that one? District?
Uh, no, sorry.
Thank you, Lee.
You want to go? Sure. Okay, okay, so, um, for the tech committee, they have quite a lot to discuss. They talked about the C Mets and Albany pulling out structural changes that are going to come down with how things will be routed. And also, our network infrastructure is doing an update and review. And talked about what we all use the network for, internet access, Wi-Fi, copier phones, security cameras, H-back, digital signage displays. And that the core network switches are going to be replaced. Wi-Fi access points will be bid on. Also, our new standard, um, we have Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi five, and Wi-Fi six, um, is what is coming, it uses a different frequency band. He described it as being, what we've had is like a single lane, and this is like a multi-lane. Compared to a highway. Um, camera additions and upgrades, higher resolution on the upgraded cameras, um, some smart T, TV additions, talked about Chromebooks, um, we've got a hundred and six Chromebooks out for repair. And, um, parts are just unavailable, probably is why they're all backed up, but we're looking at changing manufacturers on those, so that, uh, we're going to try to stay with the same features at close to the same price point, but going with a different manufacturer. And there'll be security awareness training, professional development, probably coming. Said we purchased two hundred seats for that. Also, um, classroom technology, we'll be surveying teachers to see whether they like their laptops, their desktops, or both. Laptops were purchased with COVID money, so whether that's sustainable going forward, which our teachers really liking to use. Um, some teachers really love both, but not necessarily everybody. And then, um, let's see, Minnesota student data privacy, they're keeping a running list on our website of electronic curriculum and testing, which goes, um, gather student data, and so we need to tell the parents how they use that data, so, but teachers use a lot of different, um, things, so we're trying to decide, you know, what's the best way to go about collecting that information from teachers, so it was suggested that we use some kind of Google form, so that teachers can, um, just be communicating about what they're using, and so they can try to figure out what private data is being gathered about students, and just be, um, on the up and up of that. And then finally, Amy talked about, um, subscriptions, that costs that the district is paying quite a lot, has, especially over COVID, paid quite a lot of money out for. Trying to determine what is supplemental and what is curriculum can be difficult. And, uh, just trying to sort out which things we, our needs, and what are the most important things that we can do to
Thank you. Randy?
Uh, AAA, um, every year, we have a, they call a group of us together. I've been representing, I've been the school board representative for the region. Uh, before that, Chris Winter was the school board representative. Uh, holding for their A D is the athletic representative, Pierce, their band teacher is the arts representative, and St. Cloud Cathedral, he's the system principal, but he has been the academic representative. So it, it's really, it's, it's really a night, it's, it's a nice night, they have a banquet, uh, they got, I think it was nineteen kids that got up on stage, they did a three-minute speech, um, basically talking about, you know, their learning experience with school, um, what they want to take with them, where do they see themselves in the future, you know, a little bit of life goals. So, but like I said, it was really, really good. And once the banquet is over, uh, us judges, we stay back, once the room is clear, and then we start to deliberate. And, uh, I was just having a brief conversation with Greg and Chad on this. There's a lot of weight on each of those three areas, um, but you got to have all those three areas, uh, we did very, very well in the last few years. This year, I don't know if you guys are aware, Pat's daughter had won the regional AAA winner, and she did a phenomenal job. Especially in her speech, I thought she just, she nailed it with the speech, because it was really a close one up until then. So, kudos to the Helen family. And, that's about it.
What is the region? When you say you're the region rep, what is that? Is this the whole state?
Well, the state broke into, first every school picks, and then you have a region.
Okay.
And then I think there's a district, and then there's the state, there's, there's an interim one before you go to state. So we have Pierce, Swanville, Albany, Royalton, Sock Center, Cathedral, oh, I missed some of that. There's, there's, I think there's eight schools there. Uppsala, um, but that's our region, that they call it. So it's kind of like every, now it was in Sock, Albany, and then we kind of veer off to the northeast. Little Falls. So that, that is our region. So from the region, then they do that district, where the state gets more largely divided. I think that was, was that next week?
Tomorrow. Or Wednesday night?
Wednesday night. So then they will compete again for the region, or the district, and then it's on to the state.
Where's the district one?
St. Cloud.
Kellyanne and St. Cloud.
Oh, okay.
Ours was at Cheyenne, Albany. We usually do it at the Holiday Inn St. Cloud, but, um, Holiday Inn's doing renovations, but also we got a streaming deal at Cheyenne's, which is great for me because it's close by. No, like I said, it's just, it's, I wish they would actually record it and send it, because it's really phenomenal, these kids and all their achievements, I mean, these are like Emmett, the one that coordinates it, there's no loser, I mean, they're all just, these are your rock stars of the year. Because like I said, you have to pick up your athletics, your arts, and your academics. And there's a lot of kids that do very, very well in one or two areas, but there's not a many kids that do well at all.
Me?
Uh, elementary staff development, uh, they discussed the March twenty-fourth, a half a day in service. They are going to be looking at new digital, or new science curriculum, um, and, uh, training, hopefully. They might be looking at literacy if they have a chance. They, uh, their main topic of discussion was, um, next year's calendar. We're so heavy in the fall with training, and we don't have anything later in the year. And so I said, well, the L N C committee looks at it, teachers look at it, they're the ones who have to bring it up. And so, um, I mentioned it to, to Greg about it, and they asked when the calendar was coming out, they've talked to their rep, and like you have said at the presentations, we don't know yet because we don't know where the referendum's going, what our calendars could be for next year, when we're starting, this kind of thing. So they're, they are meeting and discussing maybe changing a little bit how the, um, staff development days are spread out more in the year. Um, they also mentioned that that Friday, or the day before Christmas vacation, when they get to work together as groups and whatever, was an awesome workshop. They really got a lot done, and said, we would like more of those, where we have more time to meet with the groups and, and get some of the stuff done that we don't normally have time for, so they really appreciated that.
That was a bonus?
It was a bonus one, yeah, so they weren't expecting it. Very appreciative that they got it, so. That's about it.
Thank you. Uh, administrative reports? Mr. Dr. Yes? Hello, board members? Uh, we had, last day of, uh, first semester, we had a couple of false fire alarms that, uh, staff and students did an excellent job on with their thing, followed protocol. And I didn't really have anybody ruminating about, I didn't have time to finish my test, I think there was one teacher that said, some of my students might be a few minutes late, but it was fine. A lot of times I like to hold off on getting those done too fast, because every once in a while in winter, we'll have one of those that just go off. And, uh, it's just a faulty sensor, I don't want Sean to contact it and company. At any rate, um, snow days is fast approaching, we've got that coming. We've got that coming the week of February 13th through 16th. And usually we have coronation first or second hour, that first day of the week, 13th. We may tweak that to Friday, we don't know for sure yet. If it changes to Friday, I'll just throw you all in email, just to let you know that that will be a question. And the Germans are coming Thursday evening on the 16th. We've got about 25 students, I believe, and two chaperones. One of the chaperones, I think, is going to be staying for about a week. And with another family that they, that gal Sabina had stayed with five, six years ago. So, so we're looking forward to that, getting that back into more of a routine with some of the schools that we have partnership with. So, other than that, semester two got off and running. Fascinating as she goes. Thank you.
As Mr. Duckett said, first semester, first day was today of second semester. And then the middle school, everybody's looking forward then to incentive day. That's this coming Friday, students have the option to go to Andy's Tower Hills, which is always an option. And then this year, the other option is students will rotate between movie at Sock Center and bowling at Albany. I wasn't able to secure the bowling alley in town, they had something else going on. Like I wanted to make sure they were number one choice for us. So kids will choose between those two options for incentive day. And again, that's this Friday. The other thing that I continue to update you guys on is the middle school continues to use a life skills curriculum. This is the third year that we've done it. Becky Gloss and Becky Beldore and Lee are fidelity monitors. They can't do our grant through M V H. The sixth and seventh graders, the eighth and seventh graders are completed. And the sixth grade will conclude in a couple of weeks. And we have one more year left on that grant that will cover that. And as always, as we head towards spring here, we're starting testing season already. Access for YELs will start pretty soon. They want to start right away at the beginning here in February. And the district ACT is scheduled for March 8th. And that's 11th graders that sign up for it.
For LST, Robbie, can we continue it without the grant or not really?
We, we can. Really, the only thing the grant covers is training for the teachers.
Okay.
And your guys' cost for the fidelity monitors. And then there's little pieces that they pay for the teachers to do surveys. Overall program surveys at the end, what did you think about it? You know, how effective do you think it was, things like that. But we can continue it, but we would have to purchase the curriculum then as well.
And if you purchase the curriculum, you really wouldn't need fidelity monitoring anymore?
Then it would just be.
Part of your curriculum?
Yes.
Okay.
Of us monitoring, make sure that it's implemented correctly.
Great, okay.
So what are the teachers saying about it? How do they feel about it?
The teachers feel that it's going really well. They, obviously, in sixth grade, they really like it. By the time eighth grade rolls around, they're like, yeah, this is, you know, the kids get the same lesson, just a little bit more depth as far as sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So the eighth graders, now I've heard the same topics for three years in a row. The amount of lessons given reduces down every year. So in sixth grade, I believe it's like 19 lessons, and then it goes to 13 lessons and then to nine lessons. And they just get a little bit more dense and more in-depth. But from what I hear and from what I see when I'm in there, the kids are very, participate pretty well. And you, you guys are in there, so.
Yeah, I've always been impressed with it. I mean, you give a class occasionally.
Oh, sure, yep.
It's quiet.
In a topic that's.
Correct.
Yeah.
But otherwise, it seemed very intuitive, willing to participate.
I think so too. I was just kind of curious what teachers were thinking. I think it's a really great program.
It's, it's good because our, the health that we implemented in sixth and seventh grade, every kid's got to take a quarter of health class. Also follows up on a lot of the same topics such as drugs and vaping and health and relationships and those types of things. So kids at that level are getting it a couple times, which is really good.
I agree.
Yes, yep.
Ms. Pearson.
Yes, you mean Bedwary is just around the corner. And so elementary always participates in I Love to Read Month. And we are participating in the one school, one book activity as our families. And the book there, they will all be reading, it's Benway and Hattie. It does involve a dog. And so the kids are pretty excited, there's a squirrel in the book too. So, but it is, stories kind of told through the dog. And the culminating activity for family engagement will be on March 2nd, which is on Dr. Sutcliffe Day. So we will be planning an activity for the whole family on that night. And there'll be more coming out a half later. Our K-5 staff, winter benchmark meetings where we review our winter data will be starting January 30th. And we will be doing one or two grade levels a day. That students have earned through PBIS a movie by grade level to go to the auditorium. So the parents are taking the kids down for two hours while the teachers review the data and adjust instruction and interventions accordingly. So they should be productive and the kids are excited because the auditorium screen is all fixed and they'll be able to use it. So they'll be able to see a movie on the big screen. And grades four and five are even more excited. The third try will be to go to the scene on Wednesday. And it's, the weather looks good, so they're excited. And so they get to go on their field trip. And yes, thank you to PTA, they help provide the bussing for that, so that's great. And the kindergarten team is beginning to plan the 23 kindergarten roundup. And we are scheduled for March 31st. And we're beginning to work on that. And we'll be ready to welcome our new incoming class on March 31st.
Thank you, Miss Warner. First thing I want to do is thank all those people that were able to send their community presentations. This is the fourth round that I've done since I've been here. They have these community meetings and certainly by far, these are the most, excuse me, these are by far the most attended. And had a lot of great discussion, presenting the information, feeling a lot of good questions. So thank you all for that. And two of the gentlemen that are here tonight, I've always appreciated their conversations. Absentee balloting has been going very well with district office. We have our final formal tour tomorrow night. I'll be hanging around the media centers by 7:00 PM. Everybody wants to come for a tour of the building. One of the things that's kind of been talked about in a couple of different reports already is the 2023 legislative adoption. It's off and running. We just got a report today from M A S A talking about the governor's proposal. He's looking at four and two for this biennium. He wants to tie inflation cap. One of the big things he talked about, and he talked about before, is the reduced special ed cross subsidy. We had a discussion on that at our open forum meeting. And also reduce the English learned cross subsidy by 25%. That's the governor's proposal. The legislator proposals, they're out there. They want five and five in both years. They're talking about family medical leave, earn sick and save time, fully fund the special ed cross subsidy fund, which for the state would go for 6.43% of their cost. They want to fully fund it up to 100%. And phase in fully funding EL cross subsidies as well and paid professional training. I think the one thing that both the governor and the legislature agree on, since it was something we went through with the pandemic, I would anticipate there's a pretty good chance of pre-universal lunches coming into play after this year. There seems to be a significant amount of support for it. That's probably going to come about. Just, I talked about Willie generating, that C meeting. And finally, I just want to recognize our pair professionals. This is Pair Professional Appreciation Week. Certainly, if there's anything that's emphasized how much Paris meant to this district. Pandemic, COVID, the last couple of years, continue to do on behalf of the district. They continue to do all the things, step up and take care of the needs of our students and staff. So on behalf of the district, I just want to thank those pair professionals, we have a couple of them here tonight. Thank you for all the things you do for our educational system. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, non-action items. First would be review and comments. Discussion on the review and comment form, public comments.
Just a, this is the document that we have to send in to the state of Minnesota on the scope and cost of our project. The state of Minnesota has to go through it and we got it right at the last board meeting. So it's, it's been, obviously, it took to this board meeting, it took a public discussion on it. This is the report, once again, it has to be approved by M V E. And listing the scope of it. And one of the things that has to be very clear is that the M V E has to give a favorable response to it. And they did this time also, like our last project, they did give a positive review on it. What that means is that if, as a district, we proceed with it, we would only need 51% to pass the bond referendum. There is, there is the possibility that M V E would not give a favorable review to it. With that, some districts have moved ahead. And if they choose to move ahead, they have to pass it by at least 61%. This is what the importance of getting a favorable review on the review and comment from the state of Minnesota.
Questions or comments? This is not an action, this is not a vote. No, this is just sort of brought up in the board. It's something that is needed, but not actually needed. Questions or comments?
No. Craig, I've been wrong. Greg, if it's like remodeling and if it's a sizable remodeling job where the state would come along and say, do you want to remodel or do you build new? Those are a lot of times where the Minnesota Department of Education will say, fine, want to go forward, it's not favorable, 61%.
In those situations, the state, as they take a look at it, they'll look at it from a district point of view. You're spending way too much to remodel it and getting old facilities where you'd be better off taking rid of the facilities.
Come along, yep. They would make that, they would make that discretionary comment in your review and comment. That's not appealable, that's what you get, right? That's what you get.
And we've already gotten that favorable review?
Yeah.
So they've looked at, when people brought up the question of can we just repair the pool or remodel the pool versus, is that part of that?
No, that's not part of it.
Okay, just the overall.
Overall scope of the project.
Okay. But if they would have found that faulty, they would have said, no, we're not in favor.
There would have been the possibility that if part of the scope of our project was to spend X amount of dollars on a pool and they would have deemed that not their recommendation, we wouldn't recommend you doing that. And we not would have gotten a favorable response. Then we still could have moved ahead with the bond referendum, but then we'd need at least 61% to pass it.
Thanks.
Questions or comments before we move on? The is 23, 22, 23 Safe School Plan.
This is just another thing you'll see in the header on that. The school board will discuss the 2022, 23 Safe School Plan. Under the current ESTER funding, this plan has to be reviewed every six months. So that's in order to continue to get the ESTER funding, which ends this year. We're just supposed to bring it up every six months. I'm just bringing it up as a non-action item because my overall assumption is there's going to be no changes in it. It's just a note within our school board agenda, up for discussion. If somebody wanted to make significant changes to it, we can move it to an action item at the next board meeting. But this is essentially the plan that we've kind of lived under for the last two and a half years. And you'll see the plan is, is there. We've included it on our website. At this time, I would not recommend making any changes to it. Some set out at the end of this year.
Is this the last time that it'll be?
Yes.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, moving on to the consent agenda. We can get a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. Background highlights and.
The only thing I, a lot of it's just the organizational meeting, December board meeting. As far as personnel, we have, usually this, this time of year, we have some coaches that coached in the spring for many different reasons. They decided to resign from their spring coaching duties. So you'll see those listed there. And if anybody knows those people, they'll know why they are choosing not to coach this spring. Unfortunately, we had Andrea Bestie, one of our math teachers at high school, outstanding teacher. She has decided to resign at the end of the year for personal reasons. The other thing of notes on leave of absence is we have our high school counselor who was requesting a three-year leave of absence under state statute. And one of the things we've been working on, especially with Miss Dusha, is we do have a replacement, which you'll also see on the new hires, Stephanie Aho. She did start today pending the possibility of the board approving this. And for those that have had an opportunity to talk with her, she's a good person. She'll do a nice job. She's new, she's fresh, very enthusiastic. Any other attributes you want to pen on your, there was a.
Republi.
Yep. So we wouldn't be able to approve this request unless we could find a solution to it.
So we're approving the three-year leave of absence?
Yep, and counting this year. So this is year one this year.
So at any time, Mrs. Dusha can come back to that phone?
Nope.
She cannot come back until after three years.
Okay.
But then she can phone.
Yep, then she can come back in.
So basically, the three years is like a runaway refusal, right? It just holds her spot?
Yes.
At the end of three years, she has the right to say, I want it back?
Yes.
And that's. And she has a right to that.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, even if we.
If we wanted to keep the current staff member?
Wanted to not approve this.
Correct.
We are on, we don't really have that, we don't have grounds.
No. Under, under the state statute, no. And we'd have entered into an agreement with her to clarify the stipulations of the leave of absence, which is approved through here.
Is everything made on their terms?
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good job, Sam. She was very appreciative of it. Well, she requested. Yes. She requested it.
Kind of like to speak on Ms. Bestie. I've had three students that have had her and they have, all three have loved her. And not my three students are all at different levels. And what she has done to go out of her way to help my kids get through is beyond what most teachers will do.
I echo that.
So she will be missed considerably.
I hope she chooses to come back sometime or want to come back if they have a spot. She knows that and I'm very much appreciative of everything that she's done as well. She's a great person. And when you're a great person, you learn a lot more than just.
Can I probably ask this earlier? Wendy Barrett being out, does someone have to take over or it's got to set up and it's kind of good to go? Okay.
She'll be okay.
So you had the, had said that there'd be a document for Mrs. Dusha to sign. She's seen that or?
Yeah, she signed it.
Okay.
She has signed it.
Any questions or comments about any of the other elements of the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Uh, moving on to treasurer's report. Motion to approve the treasurer's report?
A vote.
And a second? Sounds good. Highlights?
Not a whole lot to mention other than if you look at the expenditures for the month of December, you'll notice that they're significantly lower than the other previous months. And that just has to do with Christmas break in there. If that, there's a whole week where we don't even have mail delivered to the office because nobody's here. So we don't have a week to build, but other than that, it's right on track to basically where we were last year.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all of, all in favor of approving the treasurer's report, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Action items, limited list. First being, uh, gifts and donations. Motion to approve, accept the donation, the gifts and donations that's listed.
So move.
And a second?
Okay.
The one from the Lions is for football, not wrestling. It's for football play clocks. It says wrestling.
Oh. That for obviously non-Barsby games, but I would.
No, it's actually for the play clock, the 35 second play clock.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Generous, yes, much appreciated. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Pat?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Yes.
I would make a motion to, uh, close this meeting for the purpose of the, uh, superintendent evaluation, which we do mid-year, which is today's time for January meeting and then, um, we'll, our motion to close meeting, please.
Second. You made the motion, Pat?
I made the motion, thank you.
Thank you, second. Doesn't even do that.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Can I take the picture now?
Yeah. I would just take it and say in place to put it up the last couple of years, it's down by a yard or something, it'd be good background.
Yeah.
Well. Where do we reach to call? Right here, this room?
Yep.
I'll be hovering right around here. Yep, come in the door.
I can hit in-stream if you have anything to do. In-stream as well. Don'ts?
I ain't touching it.
Oh yeah, he was going to say, remind, he said, don't make it, remind me to turn it off.
Well, I might as well.
Please get the back row this time.
Oh, thank you. Yes. I would like the back there. Okay, no.